All right. All right, let's. Let's call the Village Board of Oregon meeting to order for Monday.
Just speak extra loud.
August 2nd, 2021. And Candy, if we could have, roll call, please.
Neelo?
Here.
Pollack?
Here.
Flush?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Stitch?
Here.
What?
Here.
And Vashin is absent.
Okay, terrific. All right, we're on to, I think, if you guys are okay, I think we can take three and four approval minutes, unless anybody objects to that. Approval of July 19th and approval of July 21st. Village Board meeting minutes together.
Randy, I just want to abstain from both of those because I wasn't at either meeting.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. All right, so Jerry?
I'll move both those.
Okay. Derek? All right, any discussion, any changes, anybody see? All right, perfect. All those in favor, approval? Say aye.
Aye.
All right. No, I have to say, disapprove, what did I say? I can't even think of the word.
Opposed.
Opposed, see? It's a Monday for me, Monday. All right. All right, so those are approved. All right, public appearances, number five. Public comment, this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including both items on and off the agenda. I don't know if we have, doesn't look like we have anybody in the audience that would like to make public comment at this time. Okay? We'll go on to 5V, which is presentation on the Oregon Youth Center from Director Precious. Precious, you want to come up and introduce yourself to us and take it away?
Thank you so much. My name is Precious Woodley and I'm the Director of the Oregon Youth Center. I have been in this position since May 2020. I mean, it has been a pleasure to serve the youth of Oregon. Within this timeframe, I have accumulated an annual report, which you'll see on your screens. This is a report that we send yearly to the county. We also report to them quarterly as well as monthly. Our unduplicated goal was 100 for the year and we have already surpassed that number because of the innovative recruitment measures that I have created. And that's from canvassing to just as soon as today. When we were walking back from the pool, I just stopped at the basketball court to talk to a couple of youth. And so that's what I have noticed, that our youth need is definitely a consistent person to continue to advocate for them and it's been a pleasure to do so. This information that you see here in regards to youth participation data, it goes to show that our numbers are definitely increasing in regards to how many days a week unduplicated students are showing up. So what that means is, let's say I am a new student at OIC. Sometimes they come once a week, sometimes as many as five days a week. And so that number is reflected there. Would you be so crying to scroll? Thank you. This information here shows the different type of programming that happens every day at OIC. So over the course of the last year, we've had many hours of recreation programs to be able to support the social emotional needs of our youth. But we definitely dived into the academic support, allowing OIC to be a hub during virtual programming for the school district. Additionally, we created what was entitled tutoring with teens, with the Oregon School District specifically with the high school students, understanding that they still needed community service hours in order for them to graduate. And so the high school seniors would tutor our fifth through ninth graders, definitely thinking win-win to be able to create a mentorship program essentially as well. Additionally, we are supported via volunteers. That is a huge part of the Oregon Youth Center, as I am currently only the only employee there at Oregon Youth Center. So we definitely appreciate the community for their volunteer efforts, whether they are monetary or in-person in youth engagement every day. Here we show our youth volunteers as well. We, a part of our youth leadership and youth development, we think it's very important that they understand the idea of service in giving back to their community as well. And so they do that at the Oregon Youth Center, as I stated, via tutoring. But then they take on many leadership roles as well. And they create different programs, they run different clubs daily. And whatever they come up with in regards to how they would like to lead the youth, we talk about it together and we definitely hone in on their interests and we see it through. Here, I took a survey, which we have to take yearly specifically for the county. However, we do quarterly surveys just to get the feedback from the youth to see how we are doing and how we make them feel overall. Supporting their social emotional needs in out-of-school learning space is so imperative to their growth as a young person. That was a huge part of my thesis even in my master's program, understanding what out-of-school learning spaces do for students. And so we want to make sure that that is always a safe space for them. And so some of the questions we asked is if they felt cared about, if they felt that staff are listening to them. And then also in regards to if they had problems, if they felt that they can come and talk to us. And so we are in the process of like creating many different MOUs and we are ensuring that the different organizations that we are looking to partner with also have those same goals and minds and morals and values for the youth as well. Lastly, there is a story that I shared at the end of every annual report. And they asked, what does that look like in regards to a time where we understand that OIC is not only special but valuable as well? And so that story just happened just as soon as, I believe it was about a week or two ago. And a student asked me, well, Ms. Precious, well, if you're not here, what happens? OIC closes. And so I shared with them that we collectively work together, myself and the board, for us to see if there is a board member available. However, board members do also have full-time jobs, which the OIC is very mindful of as well. And so sometimes the inevitable does happen for us to be able to, for us to have to close. Aside from that, we are definitely very consistent in being open and meeting the students' needs in regards to, we had different many change of hours throughout the school year, just trying to figure out what worked best for our age group as we are the only fifth through ninth grade out-of-school learning space within the Oregon community. Additionally, I hope that many ask, well, how can I give back to the Oregon Youth Center? And as I stated, we definitely appreciate volunteers as an in-person support. But then we also are looking for monetary support as well, as we want OIC to be here for years to come. Within these efforts I have created, it's called In Our Corner, specifically Oak and Park, for there to be, there's a pledge program in place. And what that pledge program looks like is you are open to giving a pledge, whether it's one year, three years, or five years, or anywhere in between, whatever works best for you and your family, to be able to support the youth yearly. So we definitely, again, as I stated, we want to make sure that OIC is here for years to come because the students don't have, or the youth at that, within that age range, don't have another outlet aside from OIC. And them ensuring that they have a safe place to be, it keeps them off the street, it keeps crime rates down, but which essentially supports the community holistically. We have a flyer in regards to the youth give back, which share many different ways that you can give to OIC as well. We have a wish list that is currently on the flyer, but then we also have a wish list that lives on our website as well. And you can also share your bills receipts. And what that looks like is, as many times as you go shopping at Bill's, save your receipts and drop them off however often you feel the need to, to OIC. We gather those yearly and we share them back with Bills and we receive a portion of that as a donation. There's also Amazon Smiles within the timeframe that we are in in regards to the, hopefully, the end of the pandemic. We have increased on our virtual avenues of being able to shop. So making sure you go through Amazon Smiles and select an Oregon Youth Center to get a portion of your proceeds. A portion of the proceeds. And lastly, again, volunteering. The students definitely look for those consistent faces. So even if you just have an hour a week to a few hours a week to be able to give students, we would greatly appreciate it. Currently at the Oregon Youth Center, we have what we call summertime at OIC and that has been happening since June 14th and it will end as of August 20th. We're open every day, Monday through Friday, from 12 to 4:00 p.m. We have a variety of activities going on and it is definitely, I always say, this is something the youth don't want to miss, but making sure to capitalize the Y-O-U in there. And so we definitely want to be able to, again, support families holistically by providing a safe space for students to be. Lastly, the youth, so hunger as well as boredom creates behavior. And if we keep them fed and we continue to provide quality activities for them, that definitely minimizes the behavior at OIC. Overall, research states that as well in many different spaces, including schools. And so we have what we entitled the snack drive because we are, again, a nonprofit. And so all of donations are tax deductible. And if it isn't monetary, we definitely appreciate different items from Easy Mac and Cheese all the way down to bottled water. So whatever that looks like in regards to, you know, your Costco weekly run or monthly run, thinking of OIC, we would definitely appreciate it. And those donations can be dropped off anytime the center is open, which is currently Monday through Friday from 12 to 4:00 p.m.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions?
So Precious, I know I did a shout-out on my Facebook page. And I don't know the answer to that. I'm hoping that it yielded some, some things for you. Did it, Kelly? Shaking her head, good.
Yes, it definitely did. And what he is referring to is, OIC is currently in a deficit in regards to our budget and we are continuously working towards that. As I wrote, within the last month, we've wrote three different grants to be able to support that. But again, we are continuously open to donations, pledges, whatever may be best for you and your family to be able to support OIC. And all of those donations can be given electronically via PayPal. And that is treasurer@oregonyouthcenter.org is our username on PayPal. You're also welcome to drop any checks or money orders or cashier checks off at the OIC as well. And we also have a mailing option, which is P.O. Box 124, Oregon, Wisconsin, 53575.
Okay, let's open her up. Jerry?
Yes, Precious, welcome to Oregon.
Thank you.
It's good to have you here. Just curious, do the children still, or does someone sign the children in and sign them out? Is that still going on?
Yes.
Okay. Would it be possible to accumulate what, where they're from? If they're from Madison, if they're from Stoughton, if they're from McFarland or whatever?
Yes, that is collected in our attendance data to show which municipalities the students are from. Primarily, within the pandemic, they have been from Oregon due to transportation. And so prior to the pandemic, we did have a bus from the Oregon School District. And that is something that I'm currently working with the Transportation Director to start back this school year. Last school year, we weren't able to do that because of the assigned seating due to COVID precautions. And now going into this next school year, we will have a bus from Forest Edge and RCI. And we are working on a bus from Oregon Middle School as well.
Okay, so next time you do a report, would you include that, please?
For sure.
Okay. And another reason I bring that up is, as you mentioned, there's a deficit right now. Once a year or a couple of times a year, you could reach out to the municipalities that are sending or the children are coming from and ask for donations from them.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. That's it, thanks. Again, welcome.
Thank you.
So Precious, let me follow up on that. Do we get something from like the town of Oregon or Rutland? And do we get a little bit of funding?
Yes. And, and that feedback, so I recently created what I call the newsletter, which identifies those highlights of what's going on and how the different municipalities can help as well. And so that, the next newsletter will go out right before the school year starts because that newsletter also includes what the hours will be. And so we want to make sure, again, as we know that all students will be going back to school, we wanted to make sure that that timeframe supported the schools before we made that public announcement of what that would be.
Very good, I know that. Unless you ask for donations, you don't get donations. So it's a good idea.
For sure. And I think it's very important in regards to thinking win-win as, as different municipalities or donors even would definitely want to know what they're giving into and how it's being utilized. So I think that's very important.
And how many participants are coming from their municipality too?
For sure.
They would have no other way of knowing that, other than to get the info from you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Yeah, Amanda?
Hello, welcome to Oregon. My son very much enjoys the Oregon Youth Center. He went a little more regularly before the pandemic happened, but we're hoping that this coming school year, he'll be going. But there's really a great variety of activities that goes on and it's a wonderful, safe space for kids to hang out. So I'm wondering if your, your fundraising is also gearing towards more attendance again? Because it looks like these numbers are down from the previous year because of the pandemic, obviously. So, you know, you're expecting more kids during this coming school year, I take it, and maybe have more monetary needs?
For sure. I definitely think that that will grow. As, as I stated, primarily it will be, we will need to be supported in regards to food. But then also, we want to make sure that we're supporting operations so that I can have an assistant for the school year as well. That's very imperative if I, as I stated, when it's the inevitable that has to happen and I can't be there and a board member isn't available, that we have to close. And so that promotes inconsistency for the students, which isn't very helpful in their lives. And so we definitely want to make sure that we're supporting operations as well as the programming budget.
Randy, could I add something, please?
You sure can.
So some of you may know that our Oregon officers, including myself, have spent some time at the Youth Center since Precious stepped in as Director. And I've been asked why. I first want to say, in looking at the annual report, I think it looks great, great job on it. But there's one thing that's left out and that's what you individually bring to the Youth Center. And I'm, I'm just going to share it. I know you don't put it in the annual report because it's never about you. You're just a fantastic person, so I'm going to share it for you. I have watched her firsthand and how she works with our youth. And I've worked in this community for 17 years now and I have never seen someone care so much about our youth than Precious. She gives her all. And so when people ask me, why are your officers over there? Because it's contagious. Who else would you want to work with than somebody who cares that much about our kids in our community? And she loves to partner with us. She's teaching us as we're there, how to build even better connections with the Youth Center kids. So I, I have been nothing but impressed by Precious. And not only because of how she cares about our Youth Center, but just a strong, fantastic leader in our community that a lot of people aren't even aware she's there. But that's because she does such a great job taking care of our youth that they don't, there's not that help needed. I hope, you know, people really consider donating to the Youth Center because I know what Precious is capable of, seen it firsthand. And to be able to provide her those added funds to do all these extra things, I just, I could only imagine the great things that could be done. So I just thought I'd add that. And I, I really appreciated her friendship too.
Thank you so much, Chief.
So Precious and Kelly, the other thing you don't know is, after Martin and I and the chief, we had a meeting, we reached out to the school district. So Martin and I are going to meet with the school superintendent and talk potentially, if there's any funding or anything that could come the, come the way of the Youth Center. So we, we'll have that in the next couple of weeks. So just want to let you know.
Thank you so much for advocating for the youth.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anybody else on the board? Comments?
Okay. All right. Well, Precious, thanks very much for coming and give us, giving us an overview. And we're rooting for you and hopefully you'll get some more donations.
For sure. Thank you so much.
You bet.
I appreciate you having me.
All right, we are down to number six, which is Proclamations and Announcements. We have in our packet upcoming meetings and events. It was in your packet. This is always, I like this because then I can fill out my calendar. Easy to figure out where we're supposed to be at certain times. Anybody have any questions or comments on the upcoming meeting and events? Okay, I'm not seeing any nods or anything. We'll go on to seven, which is Report of Village Officers. First one is, is Martin's. He's got quite a list here, of things he's been doing. Anybody have anything for, for Martin? Any questions or comments for Martin? Or Martin, anything you want to highlight or?
No, you got my report there. I don't have anything else to add, unless there's any questions.
Okay, anybody? Mike, yeah?
Happy birthday.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. All right, let's go on to Library Director's Report on Status of the New Library. Jennifer?
Yeah, and I know you had the memo in your packet, but I just wanted to make sure you're updated on what, what's going on with our project. And we did just hire an owner's representative and that kind of came to fruition from some past board discussions at this level about construction management services and making sure our project had assistance to stay on budget, on schedule, and just to be the best project it could be. So we put out an RFP. We got eight firms that were interested in providing those services at very different cost points, of course, and went through interviews with three of those firms and selected Vine Consulting as the firm press to work with. Vine Consulting has a lot of experience in the construction industry, but also that individual Jeff also served on the Library Board in Wanaquie for three years. So also knows, you know, municipal boards and service as well. So I think he'll be a great asset. He did participate in the Village of Wanaquie's new library project, which opened in 2019. So he has recent experience building a library in Dane County, which will also be helpful to our project as well. Jeff and I spent a lot of time this morning reviewing a proposal from our architects for their contract. So he's working already, he started, you know, his contract started on Sunday. So he's already been working to get us a contract for architectural and engineering services so we can start moving forward and solve some of the challenges and get some answers to move our project forward. So just wanted to let you know that, that he's on board and that he's working with us to get the architect going so we can get this library built, so.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Jennifer? Okay. All right, Jennifer, thanks very much for that update. We're on to C, which is Public Works Director, Report on Main Street Traffic Patterns. Looks like a little change. Jeff?
A little bit of a change, just to give an update on the status of the construction. We sent out a, kind of a Facebook blurb last week, a social media blurb. They're just saying that the utility construction portion of the project, which is what the village has contracted, is complete. And so our contractor has moved offsite. You probably have seen a lot of work stop in that northern portion of North Main Street. And now pretty much most of the work remaining is on Dane County Highway District. They've been working south of Netherwood Road. If you've been down there or walked down there, it's really starting to look like a road again. Looks really, really nice. And they'll be coming back and likely paving the first lift of asphalt in that section, hopefully in the coming week, week to two weeks. And then, once they start to move to the north section of the project, which would be basically from Walgreens North and to McDonald's and beyond. Sue approached me last week. Sue Lebron, who's the engineer with Dane County Highway, just said they would like to make a change to what they were talking about in the initial traffic pattern for this area. They noticed that when our contractor had been working up there, there were times where it was only one-way traffic. It still worked because there was a lot of traffic. Now been moved over to Market Street and a lot of people have been using that for access. But what they're trying to do is, is maintain only one lane of traffic north during the time period they're working on that section. And that would still maintain access to all the businesses. But then it gives them a larger area to work to allow their excavator and their backhoe and everything to swing and work in that area rather than trying to work in, say, a 10 or 12-foot lane at a time. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention. It's something different that was brought up during the, than the pre-construction meeting. I support it mostly from the standpoint as far as if you give them a better working space to work in, you're going to get a better product and I believe it'll be done quicker. And so I'd rather, kind of, it's almost like the Band-Aid, you want to rip it all off at once. I'd rather kind of do that. And, and I think, you know, overall, we'll get a better product and I think it'll be done quicker.
Okay. Any questions or comments for, yeah, Jerry?
Yeah, I just want to add that I was in discussion with the Assistant Highway Director last week. And when they finish in Oregon, they're going to go out and start reconstruction of Highway A from MM over to Highway D.
Oh, good.
So that'll be, I know a lot of people in town here use that road also. So it's coming, it's still scheduled to happen. People are wondering because it's getting late in the year already. But that's my update on Highway A.
Okay. Anybody else? Comments or questions for Jeff? Okay. All right, Village Department Head, Chief, I know you, and maybe Rachel or Lisa? Chief?
Yes, I just wanted to, and I think it was on one of Martin's memos there. Just a reminder, we do have National Night Out tomorrow night from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. right here on, and so come on down. We'll have tables. Usually it's a pretty good intended event.
Flip you over it.
Yeah, Kaiser, right?
Kaiser, yeah. Not here.
Nice, Kaiser. And then this Friday, August 6th, at about 3:15 p.m., we're doing the Law Enforcement Special Olympics Torch Run. So at about roughly 3:15 p.m., the Special Olympic athletes are going to leave from our police department and run down Park Street to Oak, go up Oak, take Brook to Spring, and then come back up Janesville. And they'll end at Ziggy's. We'll post everything on, on Facebook as far as the map. And I'll send the information to the department heads in case you guys want to come out and cheer on the athletes. But again, that'll be roughly around 3:15 p.m. It's expected to be about 20 to 30 athletes and it'll go fairly fast.
Okay. Any questions, comments for Chief? Anybody else? Rachel or Lisa? Do you have anything you want to? Yeah, it looks like Rachel's.
I was just going to say, if you're, if you're thinking about the COVID policies, I think Martin has a memo in the packet that'll be coming up later on the agenda.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So, all right, so we'll go to E, which is Village Board Comments. Just, just want to point out two things in your packet. We got an email from Mr. Gorman thanking us helping with the financing for their 200 North Main Street. If you recall, last one, they paid that off early in the last meeting. So that was just a thank you from him. And then there was a, a letter that I did for the Anderson Farm County Park. They're applying for a grant for irrigation system. If you haven't been, anybody hasn't been out there, it's quite spectacular out there right now. They really have done some phenomenal things out there. So that, that was in your packet as well. Anybody, anybody else have any Village Board comments? Yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, so it's, it's not so much a comment, I guess, as a, as a question. Can I request at some, I'm here, I guess, to have the, the Planning Commission meeting be virtual instead of in-person?
Do you want to wait?
Yeah, I think we can cover that under the COVID.
Oh, we're going to talk about that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
There's a few things going on that we can talk about.
Yeah.
Thanks. Wasn't sure when the right time to bring that up was.
Anybody else? Yeah, Jerry?
No, I just, I just want to echo some of your, on your comment. I want to add to your comment on Anderson Farm Park.
Yeah.
I was out there for a sculpture dedication.
Yeah, I was there, I think I left before you got there, but.
Right, last Wednesday night. But, and again, as Randy had said, if you haven't been there, it is very, very spectacular. I mean, there's, the path that was gravel is now asphalt.
Yep.
The wildflowers down to the south of, of the parking lot.
New Dog Park.
You know, the new Dog Park. As a matter of fact, there is a path mowed, there's a mowed path now that you can take your animal on. It's very well-developed, but I don't think many people know about it yet. So hopefully, as more people discover it, it will be more used.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I remember going many, this is like seven, eight years ago and it was like 10 of us around a bonfire. That's how it started. And it's just amazing what they have been able to do.
Yeah, well, that's, they, there are 3,000 volunteers that work on the county parks. And Anderson Parks has a, a very good core of volunteers that make that all possible. And they're out there year-round.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything? All right, should we go to eight? Communication Miscellaneous Business. We'll go to 8A, which is Approval of the Vouchers. Let's get it on the table. Let's get a motion in a second, then we can take some questions.
I'll move those.
Okay. And Derek is going second. All right, questions? We've got Lisa's here, she's ready.
I'm ready.
Who's got, who wants to start?
Nobody else does, I will.
Nobody else does, I will.
Well, get it started, Jerry.
Okay.
First, I should say, the amount, approval amount is nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two and twenty cents is what we're going to approve.
Very good.
Go ahead, Jerry.
And I'll second that for discussion.
Well, you first, and Derek seconded already, so it's on the table.
All right.
So go ahead, Jerry.
So item. Vendor number six-three-three-O, Oregon Area Fire, and the fire capital equipment in the amount of sixty-three thousand, one hundred eighty. What period is that for, Lisa? Is that for?
That's for the 2021 capital portion of the Oregon Area Fire EMS district budget that was approved last fall.
And that's, so that's the entire budget?
That's the entire capital budget for the village portion.
Okay. Vendor seventy-nine-eighty-seven, I think it's Stab or Stab Construction Corp. for the wastewater blower upgrade. Is that the, is that the final payment on that?
No, no, that's, that's, that's three payments, three payment applications that, two of them, which I had inadvertently missed in my email box. And so that's why we have three of them tonight.
Okay.
But it's actually the bulk of, we're winding that project down.
So that's a million and a half dollar project?
It's a million and a half dollar project, yeah.
Okay.
Actually, it's, we brought it in less than that, but yeah.
Yeah, no, I guess I'd forgotten that it was such a big project.
Yeah, that's the blower, blower building upgrades.
Okay, and then, item vendor twelve thousand, one ninety-five, Aqua Chem of America, wastewater treatment plant, aluminum sulfate, thirty-seven eighty. What's that used for?
We call that alum. It is part of our treatment process, and it helps in the treatment process, process in the aeration basin. It helps sequester phosphorus, and it helps it also, the stuff drop out. I'm not a chemist, but it's part of our chemical treatment of our wastewater.
Okay, all right. And then, item or vendor thirteen thousand, forty-two for Zimbrics, and that's a Chevy Silverado four-door. Forty thousand dollars, is that in service yet?
Yep, yep. That was approved earlier for purchase. That was our pickup truck.
Okay, where's that used?
That's actually being used by a street superintendent, by Nick, and he is, that's his everyday work truck.
Okay. And my last item is vendor thirteen thousand, forty-four, and I believe this is probably one for Jennifer. It's a Madison Area Music Therapy.
That's the Public Works.
Public Works.
They need some calm down.
No, I think that is.
You guys need therapy, but I think a different kind.
That's actually the Adult Day Program at the Senior Center. We budget about seven hundred and fifty dollars a year for that program to have music therapists come in and work with the, we budget about seven hundred and fifty dollars a year to have a music therapist come in several times and work with our Adult Day Program population, so that was.
What do they do, Rachel?
Music therapy is an opportunity for people to, through, through music, either making music, listening to music, reach back into memories, express themselves in ways that help trigger memories and connections that they otherwise might not have. So they tend to bring musical instruments with them. They get people involved in producing music. It's, it's actually a pretty amazing process to watch.
Yeah, sounds very nice. Those are all my questions. Thanks.
Okay, Jerry, thank you. All right, who's next? Anybody else? All right, so we have a motion in a second, and just, we're approving vouchers, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-two and twenty cents. And Candy, if you'll take a voice vote.
Peterson?
Yes.
Whatch?
Yes.
Devo?
Yes.
Blish?
Yes.
Stitch?
Yes.
And Balling?
Yes.
All right, very good. All right, we're on to A, which is Domination of Phil Van Kampen to the Oregon Area Joint Board of the Fire EMS Commissioners. I know we had this, we announced this several times in the last, I think, year. Didn't get any takers. Phil has come forward. Phil is, certainly has a lot of experience, fifteen years as member and chair of the Oregon Fire EMS. I know I served with him. He's a former member and chair of Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, lots of experience, so so we're looking for a motion to appoint Phil.
I'll just add one more thing.
Yeah.
He is a, before he moved in the village, he was a member of the Oregon Town Board, the Town of Oregon.
Yes, he was, yeah, yeah.
And I'll make that motion.
Okay, can we get a second, Amanda? Okay, any other discussion? Phil's a great guy, too. He'll do a good job. All right, no discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay. Phil is all set. HC is three-year repayment agreement between Jack and Balling, police officer, Village of Oregon. And then we'll, actually, D is similar, five-year repayment of Landon. Chief, do you want us to just say, we've seen this before.
Yes.
Not these particular ones, but similar ones. Just want to give us a quick.
Yeah, so with any new hire, especially just given the law enforcement climate and the investment we need to make with hiring anyone and then training them and getting them ready for the road, we do ask that they sign some sort of a commitment agreement. So for Jackson, he was already certified. He doesn't have to go through the academy. So we only ask that he sign a three-year repayment agreement. Landon, we do have to send through the academy, so there's certainly more risk on our part. And both candidates wholeheartedly agreed to the commitment, had no issues, signed it. But we have had leaned on this commitment before. We have had officers leave before the contract at time, and then they had to have to repay back some of that money that went towards training or equipment or uniforms. And it's typically prorated, depending on how long they did serve with us.
Okay. All right, how about if, are you, everybody okay if we do them both together? We'll do a three-year repayment agreement for Jackson Balling and five-year repayment for Landon, please? I'll take a motion in a second. Amanda?
I'll second then.
Okay, who first? Mike?
Mike.
Excellent. Any other discussion on these? Yeah, Jerry?
Question for the chief.
Yeah.
Chief, why is one three-years and another one five-years?
The five-year, we want more commitment from them because we're sending them through the academy. And during that academy time, which is a long time, it's well over half a year now, they're being paid salary, benefits, and so the village really isn't reaping that benefit right away of them being on the road. So this way, we can keep them longer, for sure.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, perfect. All right, A, A, E is Review New Guidance on COVID-19 and Village Response. Martin gave, had a memo in our packet, kind of, with some recommenda, well, some recommendations from CDC, some guidance, and you saw the bullet points. I'll just read the first one, recommended that fully vaccinated people wear a mask in public indoor settings in areas of substantial or high transmission. There was a note that he put in there, Dane County is not currently in one of those areas.
It is now.
It is now?
It has a Friday night.
Oh, it did change, okay. So why don't we sort of start there, and Martin, if we want to say anything else, we can have some discussion with the board on.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, at the end of the day, it's up to the board on deciding how the village wants to respond. You know, certainly, as far as if there's a village-wide, I guess, order or anything that you want to do, you can make an emergency order, kind of similar to what we did last year. But we also have the option of just putting internal policies in place within the organization. So it's kind of up to you guys how you want to respond. As far as Amanda brought up, the Plan Commission meeting this week, there's a couple of things going on there. So there's some procedural issues and some legal issues, so there's two public hearings scheduled for this Thursday's Plan Commission. Those public hearings have been noticed that they're happening here. So if we go to a virtual format, they will get canceled, and we'll have to renotice those for a future meeting. So there's, which is, can be done, obviously. So we would have to renotice them. They have to be published in the newspaper twice. And then, for the zoning map amendment, we would have to re-notify all the property owners that are adjacent to the new Autumn Ridge phase of the subdivision. So there's that. The second piece of that is, from a legal standpoint, the Planning Commission has the authority to set its rules of procedure, so how, where, when, why it meets is up to the Planning Commission. Now, if you set an emergency order that is for the whole village, saying, no village meetings, they're all going to virtual format, then they would have to follow that, because that's a public health order. So there's that piece of that as well. So those are kind of the options, I guess, that are available to the board. You know, like we did last year, or the village did last year in 2020, there was an order that was issued. Village Hall was closed, all the meetings went to virtual format, masks were required in village buildings. Those things all expired this spring, and they kind of went away, and then we went back to in-person meetings and opened Village Hall. So we could take that route again, or, as I said, you know, the village has the control over its staff, its buildings, and its services, so you can create policies that impact those things. So you could require masks in Village Hall as just a policy, or do anything else with those things.
All right.
Yeah, so, Luke, I'll start with you.
Okay, so I emailed Martin about the same thing today. I think my question is about risk. So if there isn't a Dane County emergency order in place, and we, the village, put our own emergency in place, does that put us at risk for litigation?
Yeah, potentially, it does, yeah. I mean, I think there has, if you're going to create an emergency order that affects, because of public health and safety, there should be an underlying basis to that. And arguably, what's going on could be a good argument. But the fact that there is no Dane County order maybe weakens that a little bit. But you're right, it's risk, and what tolerance of risk do you want to take? Certainly, any type of order is going to be scrutinized.
Okay, yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, so my question is, do we have to do a full-blown emergency order in order to require masks indoors at the village hall?
Nope. So that's like, you have, as the village board, you have control of this building, you can just set a policy that if you want masks.
Until further notice?
Until further notice, masks are required in the village buildings.
Okay.
And Amanda, just to follow up, because I know that Thursday, especially the Plan Commission, we're expecting quite a number of people to come on some of the items. I mean, that may be, maybe what we, I mean, could be an option that we require everybody, because they're going to be sitting all back here, to have a mask on. Or any, you know, any village, any village meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think if it is in person, that's the bare minimum that we should require personally. You know, social distancing, everybody wears masks, I think, you know, with spaced chairs and like what we have here. A lot of people will be okay with that. The second part, though, of the requests that I've been seeing is that in the Planning Commission meetings, they can be long, and people generally have to sit around and, for long periods, and, you know, wait for like the second half of the meeting, or for their item to come up. And that means a longer period, sitting with a mask, social distance, and that is difficult for some people.
So Amanda, let me just, so I'm on the plan, I looked at the agenda. It's, from my perspect, it looks like it's, it would go, unless I'm totally off, it looks like it would go pretty fast. It doesn't look like a really hefty agenda. The first public meeting is going to be, I would say that there's not, probably won't be any, there might be a few people here, but I doubt it. The big one is going to be the parking ordinance. So, I mean, when I look at it, it doesn't look like it's going to be terribly long. The parking thing could, in order, we're allowing everybody to speak, that could take a while. But to get to there, and I know it's at the end of the agenda, I think, I think we'll get there pretty fast. That's just my opinion. Martin, I don't know what you think.
Yeah, and actually Candy had kind of an idea to mitigate that a little bit.
Yeah, so we thought, because I'll be here on Thursday to help out with it, so I can clean the surfaces and stuff if people want to speak. But we could also, if people wanted to spread out in the community room, and then we could come and get them. If they wanted to come in during that time, so they're more spread out.
So Candy, the only thing is, I just learned there's a Fire EMS at five in the community room on Thursday night.
Well, we might have to tell them that we have to use it.
Yeah, their agenda hasn't been posted yet.
Yeah.
So they could change their location.
And I know it's a, it's a, almost a full close session meeting.
Oh, okay.
It's pretty, it's an important one for them. Yeah, so.
Yeah, as a, as a variation on that theme, there is the facility outside, which I think if people are concerned about being inside for hours, they're probably going to be concerned about being inside for hours at the other facility. Could we steer people out to Triangle Park and send somebody out to get them when that hearing portion comes on?
Yeah, I guess from my perspective, I hate to see us have to postpone this, because I know that, I think we all sort of want to resolve that, the one issue that's on the Plan Commission, so I would hate for us to have to postpone it, and if we can work this out, I think we should try. So it sounds like we have kind of a solution. So we want to require everybody in all village meetings, everybody in the village hall? What do we want to say? Yeah, Mike?
I would propose that on village property, we request, or we require masking.
Okay.
And outside of that, we would encourage businesses and things in the area to also require masking.
Yeah, you know, I know for me personally, like I went in the fire, or I went to, you know, went to the store, I don't, should I have my mask on? Should I, some people have them on, some people don't have them on, it's their choice. So how does Mike's idea sound, everybody?
Well, I, oh.
Yeah, all right. Go ahead, Jeff.
When you say public property, you meaning parks? Are you meaning shelters?
I'm meaning indoors.
Indoors.
So the CDC guidance, guidance for areas with substantial COVID transmission, which we've now crossed the boundary on, is to require people indoors to wear masks.
Okay.
And can I just ask a point of clarification for Martin? I believe it's up to the library board to set policy for the library, so they would likely follow whatever the village board would do for other village buildings, but it would be up to them to set that policy for the library, is my understanding?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
I'd like to, I agree with that. I think masking indoors until the CDC at least says otherwise is a smart idea, and you know, I think there are people who can't masks for whatever reason, or who can't, you know, can't vaccinate. You know, I have an upcoming trip that I'm worried about getting, you know, like I, there's plenty of reasons why people might want other people to mask as well as themselves, so I think it's the prudent thing to do. And if we can do that without doing an emergency order and drawing a bunch of attention to it, I think that's ideal, because that's less likely to draw a lawsuit or something.
All right, Mike, do you want to, you want to form a motion here for it, or let's get Jerry in?
I have one final question.
Yeah.
Mike, what was the intent of what you said? I kind of lost the fabric of what you said. Is that for business and village operations?
We can't mandate for businesses.
Okay, okay. I have no.
It's a recommendation for businesses to also require masks.
I agree with you, okay.
All right, Mike, so why don't you put forth a motion?
So my motion would be, on village property, while indoors, we're requiring masks, and we're encouraging businesses within the area to also require masks, but we're not mandating that.
And social distancing?
And social distancing.
If I could add something?
Yeah, Chief?
So I would just ask, if possible, if we could say when masks can be safely worn. So I would just ask, if possible, if we could say when masks can be safely worn. We did have an officer pretty drastically impacted by heat exhaustion recently, and he was actually inside when it happened, so I want officers to have the ability to come down. And they'll go in a room and close the door, that's fine, but if if we're going to make it that broad, if it could just simply say, but it, you know, sa, can safely do so. That way, my officers can take their mask off if they need to cool off fast.
I mean, that that seems reasonable, right?
It may save us some workers' comp claims, too. We've already.
Mike, does that sound okay?
Just wondering how that is interpreted by people broadly. I mean, I agree with you, it's an issue. If people are overheated, can't they go outside? Or or, I mean, to me, if they're by themselves, there's really no requirement to mask, because you're the only person in the building. I don't, point taken, I guess.
Yeah.
How's everybody else? Are you okay with including that in there?
I guess I'm okay with that. I I think the public isn't kind of like, wow, I can't safely wear this. I might choke myself with it, you know, no one's going to come up with the crazy, you know, ways around it, I don't think, more than usual, so.
So Mike, you're okay?
Sure.
Okay.
So just as a point of, as a point of clarification, business owners can call the shots within their space, right?
Yeah, we're, I think Mike was just saying, we're strongly recommending, but we're not requiring any businesses. We're just requiring our buildings inside.
Okay.
That we have control over.
And just to confirm then that that would exclude the library.
Okay, yep, exclude the library, yep.
And did that, excuse me.
Go ahead, Rachel.
Did that motion contain an element of, did that motion contain an element of social distancing requirement?
Yes.
It did.
All right, that will impact services at the senior center if you're going to mandate that six feet of social distancing again. It will probably mean that we stop doing a bunch of in-person things that we've been doing because we can't space people quite that far out, and I'm not sure if it means we're going to be able to continue to serve meals in the center. Masking is one thing. Social distancing makes our building really small again, and I'm not an epidemiologist by any stretch, and so we'll do whatever is suggested. But I'm wondering if anybody knows whether the CDC guideline is recommending masking and social distancing or just masking.
I don't think it is. Is it something, can 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 we require masks but encourage social distancing? Like where possible and masking when, you know, when it's safe to do so, kind of a thing.
So Rachel, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be a requirement then for you. It would just be, we would just encourage social distancing.
Very good, thank you.
Whenever possible.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Mike, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
The other thing we could do, Randy, is just leave it up to the village administrator to create that policy.
We're getting, we're making some progress here. We, I think we got it figured out, don't we? Yeah.
There's a lot on Martin's plate.
Yeah.
Do we also need to include language that says whether or not you're vaccinated, this is still a man, or not a mandate? This is still a requirement for village property?
That's, that's a good question. I mean, for for me, I would just, I'd say everybody masked, to be honest, whether you're vaccinated or not. I don't know, Mike, I, what is, what the rest of you think?
Recommendation from the CDC is whether you're vaccinated or not because of the potential to spread COVID, not necessarily. If you're vaccinated, you may not have symptoms of it, but you're just as contagious as someone who isn't vaccinated.
And for the record.
I would, I would think that we would put that language in because I think anecdotally, the patients we're seeing are fully vaccinated.
Okay.
So it would clarify any question as to, well, I received my vaccination, I don't need to wear my mask.
All right, Mike, so this is the hard part. I'm going to put it back on you because you started this. Let's, let's sort of re, let's try to restate, do you have it, Candy? Yeah.
I have.
Yeah. We've got a lot of moving parts here.
Yeah, so I have, I only have one moving. To require masks of vaccinated or unvaccinated persons to safely do so indoors on all village property. Indoors, I said, and encourage social distancing.
You get it all?
And recommend to, that businesses follow suit.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot that part. And suggesting businesses locally follow the same, the same rules.
Same standards.
The same standards.
You know, at their discretion or something, yeah, but it's up to them. Does that sound about what we need?
I'm okay with it.
All right, so we need a second then. All right, Amanda, any other discussion?
And for the record, I know this sucks for staff, I'm sorry, having you wear masks again, but I I hear you, but this Delta variant, I just feel like it's, it's, we're seeing more uptick in cases and.
All right, so we have a, a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, we have a new policy on masks. Okay. All right, we're on to nine, reports of. Yeah, oh, yeah, Mike.
So come back to the meeting for the Planning Commission. So is the plan that we will tell people to be outside?
Yeah.
And they will be come and gotten? Are we okay with that?
I think me and Martin and myself can work with the chair and get everything situated and out to the, I think maybe we could even amend the agenda. Place the mask required in right now.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, nine is reports of committees. We have none. Unfinished business is 10A, goal setting with village administrator, Mr. Shanks.
So the last meeting, I think we got through the first three. And I don't recall any substantial changes to what I had drafted there. So I think we'll move on to the fourth page of the plan, which was to explore options for public transportation. So this one came up with several board members. So obviously, we don't do anything with public transportation right now as an organization, but there are certainly some things that exist out there. And I know Rachel included me into a few things that I was able to include in the packet there. So with anything like this, I think there's maybe two directions that we could go in. If there is some specific idea or project or initiative that board members have in mind for this, we can go down, you know, those, that path. Otherwise, if we're, we're kind of taking on something completely new, a good idea is always to to spend some time thinking about it and studying it. I I use the example from the city of Pittsburgh. So back in 2010, they put a committee together and they developed a transit plan. So they, they actually did a community-wide survey, they brought some experts in, some resources in to to talk to. They documented existing conditions that were out there, so what other resources exist out there. And then they developed some, some goals and objectives, and then they they forwarded those recommendations to the village board in the form of a transit plan. And they've worked on that plan, they've kind of updated that plan in 2015. So I think that would be, again, we can go with a specific idea or project that a board, board members have, or we can kind of go down this route of of creating committee and and studying this, this more in depth.
So Amanda, just for your information, we, we kind of held off on this because we know this is something that you have been sort, sort, been kind of something in the back of your mind for, so do you have any comments? I would, one, one thing I do want to ask is, in in the public, are we also talking like some bicycles and things like, is that all included? Or are you not thinking, because?
That's a good question. Personally, I think it should include everything.
Okay.
Because I think bike paths are important and pedestrian paths and everything, the, the way people move around, we should have a plan for, for all of it. But the, the primary gap, the biggest gap that I see is our lack of public transportation, you know, to to get around. You know, we don't have taxis, we don't have buses, we don't have shuttles or any kind of anything.
Yeah, I I bring up the, the bike, because I just had a conversation last week with the B-cycle people, and they are interested in coming to Oregon.
Oh, cool.
I didn't know if you were thinking that that would be part, I think it needs to be sort of flushed out, and what are we talking about here? It's not, it needs to sort of be defined a little bit more.
I, I totally, I agree. I, I think it's all of it, and I think, I mean, a, a couple of years ago, I tried to get some people together to to look at these issues, and it was really hard to get people to help and volunteers, they just weren't there. I had two or three dedicated people, and that's it. And we were just researching what other communities have done, but we didn't get real far, and then the pandemic hit. It, it's just been really hard. So I guess my, my hope, the reason this is a big deal, I mean, we have affordable housing coming, and people that need affordable housing may need affordable transportation as well. And it makes sense to, for these things to go hand in hand. Communities that build affordable housing generally find affordable transportation, too. And that's, I, I would love to see us get serious about it and make a transportation committee, an ad hoc committee or whatever we need to do, like the, the Housing Coalition or whatever. But if we had an official committee, you know, we'd have official resources, we could build a plan, we could look at the layout and decide, all right, here's a need, how are we going to fill it, here's a need, how are we going to fill it, you know, make, make a, make a plan, like what Pittsburgh did. You know, and it's not something that's going to happen overnight. It won't happen before the library's built, I'm fairly certain. But, you know, my, I would love in 10 years for us to be able to look back and say, wow, you know, in the last 10 years, we have tran, public transit that hooks up to Madison Metro, so people can get to Madison or to Stoughton or whatever. I mean, you know, my intention was to start attending CARPSE meetings and and like, all, that's the, the area. What is it, the?
Regional planning.
Thank you.
So Amanda, you're sort of picturing like kind of we do with there are others, there might be other committees that we would sort of take like applications and assign people to a, a really a village sort of committee to sort of look at this. I mean, obviously, we're going to have to look at budget and all those things. There's going to be lots of things to sort of look at. But, I mean, I think it's, it's with, like you said, affordable housing. I mean, we'll talk a little bit later, you know, we've been talking for years about jumping over 14 and that we're growing and things like that. So is that kind of what you, like an official village committee? I mean, don't you think that would be a way to go?
I, I think making it official would, would mean, you know, regular meetings, it would mean, like, we're serious about looking into this. And it's still, it's still just a committee. It doesn't have any power except to make recommendations to the village board, and then we vote on it. But, you know, like, we'd be in charge of doing some research and and figuring out what other communities have done and making up a, a plan.
Sorry, Martin, I didn't mean to take over here.
No, no, fine. So I take it then what I have here is, is kind of as far as actionable items. You know, at some point here in the next couple of months, talking about creation of a committee, establishing that, and then going on from there.
Martin, would that be just part of reviewing that chapter as one and two that we talked about?
I think it could be, yeah. I think that could be an all-encompassing discussion, is including that in there as well.
Mike Casser.
So moving on.
Yeah, before we move on, I just want to really support what Amanda was saying. I mean, we've, we've got a budget for our village over the next few years and the generational projects that we've all talked about that will require Oregon growing. And the reason that we have been growing in the past has been our proximity to or, to the metro area of Madison. The closer we can make that connection, the more we are going to be able to expand and grow and make Oregon a vital place. And frankly, without options for mass transit, there are people that live in Madison that will not consider living out here. If you don't have a car, Oregon is not the place that you want to come live at the moment. But with these options, we're, we're four miles right now from the closest Madison Metro bus, bus route. It's not a big jump to include us in their system, and I think having a committee at this point is probably a wise move to have, and it's probably the most we can do at this point until we really start to flesh out what possibilities are there with the commission.
Jerry's got.
So moving on to.
Did Jerry, Jerry was, maybe had something?
No, I just, I just, Amanda was not aware of the commuter bus that runs through the communities that surround Madison. It runs every workday. It, it goes from, well, the, the route is McFarland, Stoughton. It goes through Oregon, but it doesn't stop here because we have an asset tube. And then it goes up to Pittsburgh, and then it goes back up to the square.
So you're talking like the state, the state worker, the vans and stuff, yeah.
Oh, the van pool.
And sometimes stop at.
Oh, yeah, that, I, yeah, you sent me that. Okay, I thought you meant like a bus bus. Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, and that's, I think, the benefit of having a committee that puts together a plan is, you know, one of the first things you do is, what are our existing resources? What's out there? And then you kind of build off from that. For the next one, affordable housing came up quite a bit in talking to you guys. Obviously, we were just talking about it a little bit with transportation. So the village has actually done a couple of things in recent years with the Lake Stone Project, being one of them. Habitat for Humanity is doing a project. We actually have a developer coming to Plan Commission this week for an affordable housing project potentially. And we also created the Affordable Housing Fund, we're using the, the TIF law extension, which is when you have a TIF expiring, you can extend it by one year, and all the taxes that you collect in that one year, you can put into an Affordable Housing Fund, so that can be used to incentivize affordable housing. So for this one, we, we have to do a Affordable Housing Report every year, and that's required by state law. It's pretty recent. We've done one for, I think, the last two or three years. But this report is put together by Elise and our planning consultants, Vandewell. And as part of that report, they have to put together various information about affordable housing, but then they're also supposed to identify different ways that we can help improve the environment for affordable housing in Oregon. So the most recent report they did, obviously, was for 2020. They looked at a couple, they identified a couple of things for, you know, improving the process for permit approval, lowering costs, making some changes to the zoning code, like, for example, allowing accessory dwelling units in in single-family zoning districts, making some adjustments to the zoning map, and then just using different programs that exist out there. So I think for this one, my thought was, okay, we have this report that we already do, we, we look at it every year. Let's look at the recommendations in there, and let's see if we can further some of those recommendations. And I know that was something that Elise wants to work on when she gets back from maternity leave. The other one, too, the other thing that I noted in there was, as Randy mentioned, southeast expansion area. And I have that later on in the, in, in the report here. But that could be an opportunity to advance affordable housing as well. Any questions or comments? Jerry?
Thanks, Martin. I just want to bring up the fact that we need to do something for our seniors in town. We can't leave them out. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we can't move the senior center up. I'd like to see that happen. But yet, I don't know, because the budgets that we have coming in the next few years are going to be very, very, very tight. And I know Mike has, has met with Lisa regarding our borrowing, and that, that's a big factor in what is driving the increased costs of our budgets in the. And that, that's a big factor in what, uh, is driving the increased costs of our, um, budgets in the near future. Uh, and when I say, I think we need to define what affordable housing is. Uh, because a lot of the projects that we have now, uh, the rentals are like $2,000 a month. And if you talk to a senior, that's not affordable to a senior. They'll look at you like you're, uh, you've lost your mind. So when I say affordable housing, I mean something like Rolling Meadows or Vinnable in Stoughton. Those are, uh, what I consider affordable. And I don't know how, I think that the biggest downside to trying to attract a project like that or get a project like that off the ground, you almost have to get the property free. And I keep working with Jeff trying to, I keep bothering him to. Still wetland, Jerry. I was talking about the properties surrounding Rolling Meadows now. And, uh, Jeff almost has me convinced. I, I.
Unless you want to put them on stilts.
Pardon?
Unless you want to put them on stilts.
Well, again, we don't want to get that discussion going tonight, but I, I just want to bring that to everyone's attention that the seniors in this town are the ones that have paid the taxes. They've played, paid the bills all the years they've been here. And, uh, I think they deserve some consideration as we look at affordable housing.
So Jerry, just to comment, the, the developer that we're, we're talking with on Thursday, Concept, when we met with them, they, they, part of their, their project, um, they've talked about senior housing.
Yeah, but if it's $2,000 a month, that's not.
That, we haven't gotten into those details, but I know what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean.
I know what you're saying.
If you know what I'm saying, you, we, we need to get some realistic numbers or a realistic definition of what this board considers affordable for a senior. Or we have income limits or something like that.
So if I, if I could just briefly?
Yeah, Rachel.
Um, there is a category of, affordable housing is, is a huge umbrella and I'm sure you guys are all aware of that. But there is, there is a category of affordable housing that caps rent at 30% of a person's income. So if their income is very, very low, they still cannot be charged more than 30% of that income in rent. And that, when, when you're talking to somebody about affordable housing, you need to make sure that their idea of affordable and your idea of affordable are somewhere near each other. And so just be conscious that there are, there's that level of rent restriction.
Agreed.
Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I think that is the definition of affordable, right? Is where you're not spending more than 30% on, on, of your income on prop, on living. But, um, I want, go ahead.
Not necessarily. Some of the properties that are considered affordable housing are based on a percentage of the average income in the county. So if you look at the average income in Dane County and then you say you can't, um, spend more than a certain amount for the average income, that doesn't help somebody who only maybe makes 30% of the average income. It's not, it, it, it doesn't prorate it for them.
Right, I was looking at it more from the individual perspective. If I'm spending more than 30% on housing, it's, it's not affordable. I just, I guess, want to recommend if you haven't read the, the Affordable Housing Report, it's actually a really interesting read. I really support a lot of the, the, um, proposals that Elise and Vandewell put into that. And I'm just wondering, are there ways that, I think a lot of that's got to go through the Planning Commission, but are there ways that we could expedite some of that? And that's a question.
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question. I mean, we could, I would have to get into the housing report to, to analyze that. But yeah, if it's, if it's anything related to zoning, it would go through Planning Commission first. Um, but certainly anything like, you know, financial incentives or, you know, financial funds or anything like that could be controlled here at the village board. And ultimately, with the Planning Commission, they just make a recommendation. The final decision always rests with the village board.
Most of it's zoning and changes the zoning.
Does anyone have, I mean, did, did that, and refresh my memory here because I did read that, but it was in 2020. I'm wondering what we can do to get around the, the high cost of building. I mean, I think that's probably the biggest barrier right now. Anything you build new is going to be expensive, period. Like, so it would all be grants or something to bring, you know, to pay for that, that we wouldn't have to repay. I say we, you know, I mean, the developer, whoever's doing it. Um, you know, like, we, we need free land. We need like a discount on the building materials, you know, so many things. I just don't know, I, I, I mean, we have some being built now and it's terrible because we need affordable housing right now. But I don't know how we can do that until building prices go down.
Yeah, housing is a complicated issue because there's so many factors out of the local government's control. Um, and, and, you know, some of the larger communities can, can throw resources at this. But, um, for a lot of smaller communities, it's just creating the environment, right? So making sure that we're removing barriers at the application process, um, lowering application fees for affordable housing projects, um, get rid, getting rid of onerous zoning rules, those types of things. So just laying the foundation so that somebody can come in and, and do those things where, you know, we don't necessarily have the resources or, you know, expertise, money, time, kind of do all those things. Any other questions? Is that a, at least for now, is that a reasonable action item for housing? Is to dive into that housing report as we go along and try to get some things implemented?
I think so.
All right. Uh, moving on.
Martin, let me just make one, uh, because this has bothered me and I, I know I've been contacted, but you, Jerry said this too. I think we, we, our ultimate goal is, we, we have to make it affordable. Um, and I, I know, I know that's not an easy thing to do for seniors, especially for seniors. Well, I think we always have to sort of keep that in the back of our mind. That, I mean, not every senior can even, $1,200 is a lot of money. That might be their whole social security check. That we need to sort of just keep, keep reminding ourselves. Um, and I know it's not going to be easy to do, but that's really sort of our ultimate goal is to really, when we talk about affordable for seniors is, is to keep that in the back of our minds.
So the next one, uh, environmental sustainability. A couple of members had addressed this. Um, and I really think, you know, this is one of those complex issues, kind of like public transportation, um, where, you know, there's specific ideas or projects or initiatives that board members have. We can go down that route. Um, but if we really want to get into a holistic, comprehensive look at something, um, you know, again, it's, it's, it's forming a committee, doing some studying and then trying to come up with some goals and objectives and, and forwarding them onto the board for, for implementation. Um, and I, I referenced the, the city of Sun Prairie. Um, they did something similar kind of how to Fitchburg did, um, public transportation, but they, they had a sustainability task force. Um, and they, again, they, they had a, a community survey. Um, they engaged with some experts. They, and I think this was kind of something that was brought up with the affordable housing. They defined what sustainability means to the community. Um, and then based on all of that, they, they developed goals and objectives that were recommended in a, a sustainability report. Um, so again, I think, uh, if we wanted to go that route, it's a formation of a committee and a development of a plan. Or if there's some specific ideas, we can certainly pursue those as well.
Martin, I'll just mention, um, I know this might be a small thing, but it was on my mind and, um, it, it kind of fits in this. Uh, Martin and I will be talking to Alliance. I was interested in seeing if we can get some more charging stations in the village. I mean, there could be one in the parking lot here and I know there's some at the high school. But it, it may, may sound like a small thing, but it's something that at least is starting to do something in terms of environmental sustainability. So we are, we are going to meet with them shortly, so, yeah.
And if you're going to do one, you're going to do two, right?
Pardon?
If, yeah. So, so the, the thing, the, one, people who drive electric vehicles and those charging stations, if you're going to wire up for one parking spot, you can wire for two, you can put two there, so. Think in pairs. That's all I'm saying to you.
Okay.
Add them two at a time or three at a time. I mean, it's, it's cheaper to do two at the same time than one and add one later, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're talking about bigger things, but this is the start anyway, something.
And can I also mention, I was the, uh, the board member representative attending the, uh, Sustainability Ta- County Level, Sustainable Municipal Task Force, whatever thing they call, I can't bad with these names. Anyway, um, uh, and I'm also a part of a group, um, a, a UN group that talks about international politics a couple of times a month in Oregon. And, uh, we're planning a Dane County UN Youth Climate Summit, uh, in Oregon. Um, and so we're trying to get, um, you know, youth that are excited about this and help them, um, get outside the school walls. I mean, I know we already have like our net zero elementary school, which by the way, is a total showcase. It's amazing and it's talked about all over. Uh, the, um, I can't remember her name now, Kathy something. Anyway, she's the liaison for all the municipal people in that county group. She came to our meeting and she gave us a lot of great ideas for how to go about doing this. Um, there, there's a lot going on at the county level that I think in particular, um, we could make changes in, in public works. Um, you know, can try and switch over to electric vehicles or natural gas, compressed natural gas or whatever. I mean, I know they have that landfill. Um, they, they take, Dane County takes methane off the landfill and they clean it up and they compress it and they, they can use it to run their fleet of vehicles. And they do it at Quick Trips. And I'm going, gee, we have three of those in town. Hmm, how could we make this work for us? Uh, you know, it, it's going to pay for itself in like seven years or something like that. Um, there's a lot of options we have. One of the ideas that they have is buying in bulk. So like the next time Jeff needs a, a pickup truck for public works, maybe we should see if other municipality, municipalities need it and buy five at a time and get a better rate, you know? That, that's something that we've talked about doing and, um, there's, they have resources that we don't. And it's trying to tap into that. We were meeting regularly before the pandemic hit and now we haven't been meeting regularly. But I anticipate that they're going to go back to that and I intend to go to more meetings. But there's a lot of ideas out there. Um, and I, I, I don't always know how to bring them here to make them happen. I hear about things and I'm happy to pass on stories, but that doesn't make it happen. So I don't, I don't know, and this is my question, like what kind of mechanism has to happen? Do we need a committee that could, um, you know, have concrete recommendations to bring to the village board? Or what do you guys want to do?
Yeah, I think that's, that's helpful. Um, because I think with a topic like this, you can go in a million different directions. And, um, you know, the benefit of a, a committee, you know, formulating some kind of plan or goals and objectives is harnessing all of that and kind of bringing it into the legislative process. Um, so that they're, they're studying it, they're working on it, and then they're recommending things up to the board. And then that prompts you guys to, to discuss it and decide and incorporate it into budgets and, and things like that.
I think that's appropriate at this point.
Yeah, we can do a few more. Any other?
Committee? Or, so are we leaning towards committee then or task force or something?
There's anything else?
Nope, that was it.
Um, I've got a few more here. So the next one, planning and zoning, a couple of board members had talked to me about community walkability uh, as being important. Um, and so I, after thinking about this one a little bit, um, you know, some of these things, and Amanda, you kind of talked about it with, with, um, housing is, you know, it's, it's a, many, many decisions made over many, many years accumulate to the built environment in, in Oregon. And, um, we actually have a, a, a pretty, a big moment for the village where our comprehensive plan is coming up for an up 20-year update, uh, in 2023 for implementation in 2024. Um, and so that can kind of seem boring, but, uh, it's actually a pretty big deal for communities because, um, that document pretty much dictates all planning, zoning and development decisions for the next 20 years. Um, and that's actually a state law. So all of our zoning decisions, all of our development decisions, they have to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Um, and so when we're talking about community walkability or human scale design, um, incorporating those goals and objectives into that plan, um, will be very important for carrying that out over the next, you know, five, 10, 15, 20 years and beyond. Um, so I incorporated that as a, as a potential action item for this. Um, so that'll be something we would work on in 23. We also have our five-year Parks and Open Space Plan, which is coming up for its five-year update. Um, and we have to update that every five years in order to stay eligible for, uh, the Knowles Nelson Grant. Um, so those are two big things that are coming up related to this. And then, of course, I know Elise has on her priority list to, uh, take a look at the village zoning ordinances. Um, she has a couple targeted priorities and some chapter wide reviews that she wants to do with, with the Plan Commission and the Village Board. Um, so again, those are opportunities to address community walkability and design. Um, and of course, all of those things, especially the comprehensive plan, is going to have a lot of community input, um, in public workshops and, and things of that nature. Any questions or comments? Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I agree with you that, that this is going to all be done through zoning and things. I'm a little confused as to how, you know, given the fact we're removed from that or at least at the tail end of that project, how we, we like urge that along. Um, but I mean, just simple decisions over time, like had we had an ordinance to front buildings on the sidewalk as opposed to putting large expanses of parking in front of our buildings, North Main right now would be very walkable and you would see a lot more people on the street like you do in downtown Oregon. Uh, but not having that, who wants to walk through, you know, block after block of parking to get to the different buildings you want to go to? So it starts with zoning and it starts with really the Planning Commission on, on what we're aiming for. And I'm unsure how to actually urge that along, process along, except maybe through Elise.
Yeah, and when we go through the, the plan update, um, you know, that'll be a pretty significant undertaking. And, you know, the Plan Commission is usually kind of the, I guess, the steering committee for that process. Um, but usually there, and I would imagine that this will happen here, you know, we'll have, you know, workshops for the public to come in, we'll have, you know, if we have Vandewell help us with that process, they'll be here to, to do planning exercises and talk about all the different components of the plan and what people want to see in it. Um, and obviously, they'll kind of go through the steering committee of the Planning Commission, but again, that will come up for, for final approval with the village board. Any other questions, comments? Is that, uh, pretty agreeable for that one?
Yeah, and I, I think like the Perks Plan, that's done by the Perks Board, right?
Correct, yep.
So like some of these are delegated already to committees. So like some of these are delegated already to committees and?
Yep, yeah, the parks plan, the, the steering committee for that would definitely be the park board.
Okay.
Um, the next one is, uh, maybe kind of a simple one. This is kind of a catch-all, so, um, board members kind of expressed various requests that, you know, we want to get the library project done, obviously. We want to get to work on the senior center project. We want to make sure that we move to village hall, the new village hall. Um, those are obviously, you know, things that are, are, were being worked on and, and are definitely underway and are going to be dictating a lot of what we do for the next couple of years. Um, so I just included that as kind of a catch-all under public facilities. Um, obviously getting the library underway, making sure we get the renovation and move to village hall. We want to begin pre-planning the, the new senior center facility, potentially in conjunction with private development, maybe affordable housing, senior housing. Um, we obviously have the big J C Park project that's underway and is planned for construction next year. Um, we kind of have next year targeted to start planning for West Side Park. Um, so that'll be a, a planning process that we want to get underway with the public. And then we have a, a major wastewater treatment plan upgrade coming up in a couple of years that we want to make sure that we're preparing for. Um, and then I also threw in, um, we had a downtown wayfinding signage plan that was, I think, really close to being implemented, but kind of got delayed by the pandemic. So we want to make sure that we finish that up. Um, and then we were also, as I understand it, there was some talk of, uh, development of kind of a gateway enhancement plan for the Janesville Street area. Um, but that got waylaid by the pandemic as well. Um, so that's something that, uh, there were some early concepts that I think were drafted internally, but never got out, um, to the public. So something we want to kind of work on there. So any other questions or projects there? Amanda?
Um, yeah, I'm wondering, when you say like gateway enhancements and stuff, what are, what are we talking about? Like for instance, I don't know what that means, like?
Well, I mean, we've looked at some possible, um, art slash improvements that would be in that intersection, kind of the, there's a little grass area between Park Street and, and in the, where Park Street and Janesville Street come together right there. Um, Randy's actually been?
I'll, I'll be talking to Culvers on Friday about that.
Yeah, he's been talking to several individuals and kind of we, we've, when we did the intersection improvement project, we kind of kept that in mind, thinking that that would be a neat place for some sort of like, you know, gateway entrance kind of, it could be a piece of art, it could be a mini tin man, it could be all sorts of things that, that, you know, so that's just something we've been working on.
And Amanda, I'll just share the, I've been talking to two artists in Stoughton who love the tin man and they're metal sculptors and they're, they're well-known all over the world. They were, they're interested in doing an 18-foot tin man and they would love to see it in the first roundabout as you come into Janesville in the middle lit. So we'll see, we've got some cost estimates, you know, whether it's, we can do that or not, but you know, there's, there's some thinking, there's some, some ideas being floated around. I, I'd like to do some more public art myself.
Yeah, interesting. I, I'm just, yeah, I don't know if I, that's.
You what?
I, I mean, I love the tin man.
Yeah.
And I mean, I, I get that, that we have this great water tower, but I don't know if, is, if that's what we'd want to define our whole community or?
That, that was their idea. They, they've always been fascinated with that, so that was their idea.
Okay, I'll think on it.
Yeah, and I think, uh, Vandewall had kind of put together some kind of planning process for kind of helping us through what we could place and where we could place it.
I got you.
Um, and that never just got off the ground just because of COVID. Um, and so that was something I wanted to add on here to make sure that we don't forget it and, um, some of the board can keep considering as, you know, new ideas come up.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of art in the roundabouts. I mean, that's unused space, that's a cool.
Actually, let me just add that I've been sort of talking, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, um, talented artists and one thing I've been is talking to some local artists and there, there's some people interested and for me personally, I would like to see it done locally.
Yes.
I mean, people mentioned Sand Hill cranes and, you know, the tin man has come up, but other things, horses, things that kind of relate to the village, but there's a lot of talent in our area that it would be nice to have local artists do it.
There's actually, um, if you visit other cities like Eau Claire, um, they actually have public art programs where they're displayed on and rotated out on a periodic basis. But artists will do work, they'll display it for a year or so on the street and then it gets rotated out for other artwork. It's actually kind of a nice thing to see.
Yeah, I had another idea on this too. I really liked, um, I really liked what the town of Ashland, Wisconsin did. I don't know if any of you've been up there, but they have, uh, mosaics done by artists on the side of all of their trash cans, their public trash. And so every, the outside of it is beautiful. There's like these tile mosaics and they're all different and they're done by different people and they have different designs and it, it took something that might be just a regular, everyday, even ugly, you know, trash bin and made it a work of art. Um, and they have murals everywhere and they're colorful and it's exciting and, I mean, that would be awesome if we could think of something similar to do for Oregon that, where we'd have it here and there and like throughout the town, not just at the gateways, but?
And also Amanda, Madison now has, they used to have a big problem with the big electrical boxes getting graffitied. Now they, they have artists decorating them and, and they're safe because that's sacred.
Yeah.
It's a piece of art.
Yeah, I like that. I like all, all of that, any of those ideas.
And murals have come up as well.
Yeah, I would welcome that. There's a lot of, of artists, um, you know, the 14 South artists, uh, and I mean, we've got, we've got a, yeah, there you go, like that.
I like that.
Yeah.
They're beautiful. Um, I just, anyway, we have lots of potential. We have like an, a blank canvas right now, I feel like.
Those work great if, if you have, if you have an entity that's being able to put it in practice and maintain them too. That's, and like a few years ago, we had, if you remember, we were here when the Boy Scouts did all the recycle cans in, in the village.
Uh, maybe.
The little blue recycle cans, you'll notice that they're all sponsored and so they, it was a Boy Scout project and they went around and sold sponsorships to purchase the cans and, and also get them purchased for the village. And, uh, and so now we have recycled cans all over the village, but it took kind of their initiative, if you will, to kind of do that.
And Amanda, the 14 South artists are interested.
Good. Okay, thank you. I just wanted some kind of, what are we talking, so, good.
Uh, any other questions, comments on this one? All right. Um, just a couple left here. So intergovernmental cooperation, uh, this one came up quite a bit too with, with all of you. Um, so I, I listed out a few, uh, things that are kind of swirling out there or in the works. Um, some of them are a little squishier than others because we're dependent upon other entities to, to do certain things. Um, so my list there, um, you know, develop a plan to address permanent rotary bike trail repairs. Obviously we want to finish the extension at some point as well. Um, develop plan for Lerner Lateral Project in Lake Barney. I know that's something that Jeff's been, has been working on as well. Um, engage with Fitchburg and the school district on the school district's expansion plans just, just immediately north of the village, um, but that one actually may end up being farther out based on their enrollment, um, maybe even 25 plus. Um, engage with the town of Rutland on southeast expansion area and I have a, a list for that coming up in a couple of pages. Um, engage and keep towns apprised of village expansions, annexations and related developments. I know that's something that Randy's actually been doing a lot of recently. Um, and then these last two, um, consider town boundary agreements and then consider working with towns to establish statutory allows extraterritorial jurisdiction powers. So there's a, a lot of, uh, state law that allows the village to have some powers um, outside of our boundaries. Um, and we don't, uh, take advantage of all of those powers right now. So, you know, some of it is as, as small as being able to approve land divisions or certified survey maps within a mile and a half of the village. Um, but it's also as powerful as creating official map that's within one and a half miles of our, our, our boundaries. We can establish where we want to put roads and where we want to put parks within that mile and a half and then that controls development within those areas. Um, and then we get, there's also town boundary agreements. Again, those are, those are really powerful tools under state law where the towns, towns in the village come in and they, they have an agreement and they agree on moving boundary lines or sharing tax revenue or, you know, doing other types of initiatives. Um, you know, those are things that are, that are out there. Um, you know, that's how, for example, the town of Madison is dissolving within a couple of months because they had a boundary agreement with the, the city of Madison and the city of Fitchburg. They agreed years and years in advance that this is how this is going to happen and this is how it's going to proceed. Um, so those are the type of agreements that you can have with towns. Um, so those are things that are out there. Those may be better to be done in conjunction with the comprehensive plan just because all those kind of things are gonna be, get brought up with the future land use map and, and zoning and all that kind of stuff. Um, but certainly some things out there to, to think about. Any questions?
So I'll just make a comment. One of the things that staff and, and I've been involved in this is we've been trying to sort of meet with mayors of Fitchburg and Verona and Stoughton and folks from Dunn and Rutland um, and even Dane County. As you all know, I mean, relationships are what matters and they're all our neighbors. And so was, you know, just sort of trying to, we just wanted to connect that we're all here to sort of help each other and I think it, it, it does go a long way. So we're just sort of trying to keep that, that positive relationship with our municipalities.
Any other questions or comments? As I said, some of these are a little more, not as exact or actionable as maybe some of the other pages, but, um, they're also dependent upon other entities, you know, participating. So some of them are out there swirling around and, um, some things will need to address. Um, the next two are ones that, um, I'm suggesting or recommending to the board um, just based on some things that I've observed. Um, you know, the first one is under human resources, uh, obviously retain and attract high-quality village staff. I think we're in the very fortunate position of having a very, uh, well-qualified, uh, and talented staff. Um, very, I think, public service-minded staff. And so the question for the village board and, and myself is how do we keep these folks? Um, and how do we make sure that we're rewarding them and compensating them appropriately? Um, how do we make sure that we're recruiting more people like them? Um, because we're in a competitive environment. I mean, there's a lot of good communities in Dane County, um, with positions exactly like we have. Um, so we need to make sure that we're, we're staying competitive in that market. Um, so I, I put a few, uh, action items down there. Uh, one thing that I, I know it's more kind of a minor thing, but making sure that we have an updated organizational chart. Um, when I, when I applied for the village administrator position, I asked for the organizational chart and the recruiter said, yeah, yeah, I'll get it for you. And then I never got it. Um, and I think it's because it doesn't really exist.
We're still looking forward for it.
Yeah. But I know, I know Candy, she's, she's put together kind of a draft one that kind of encompasses what things look like currently within the organization. So obviously that's something that we want the board to approve of. Um, and then I, I think the board's been doing a good job recently of, of considering department proposals for staffing, especially in response to growth. I know Jeff has had some restructuring and some new positions that he's, he's brought on this year. Um, so certainly that's something that we want to make sure that we continue to do. Um, I know at the end of last year, uh, the board had, um, passed that the staff do some diversity, equity, inclusion training for this year. I know that's something that Candy is, is working on and I think we're gonna have some more information on that at an upcoming meeting, um, so that we can get that accomplished. Um, and the, the next two, uh, complete a salary and classification study with a qualified consultant and then develop a revised employee performance evaluation with a qualified consultant. The village did that, uh, 20 years ago, the last time did that. Um, so I think it's, it's probably overdue that we look at those two documents. Um, obviously we want to make sure that we're paying our staff appropriately and competitively. Um, so making sure that we're keeping up with our peers. Um, and then obviously performance evaluation, uh, best practices have, have changed over, over 20 years. And so bringing in a, a qualified consultant to kind of help us create a, a reward system or how we can reward top performers, uh, I think is very important. Um, and then I think, uh, two, and I know this, again, this is something that Candy has, has kind of worked on as well, um, is a comprehensive review and update of the employee handbook. Um, as we kind of talked about with our, our ordinances last time, our, our employee handbook is in somewhat similar state of affairs. Um, it's just been outdated. It needs, it needs to be looked at and, and updated. And I think, you know, certainly when we talk about things like diversity, equity, inclusion, there's ample opportunity to look at that handbook and incorporate that and look through it, through that lens. Um, so I think that's something we should, we should also take a look at. Any questions or comments? Yeah, Amanda?
A question actually for Candy. I know you were looking at diversity, equity and inclusion, uh, programs for staff to take and, and board members if they want to. Um, any progress on that?
Well, I think that I'll be able to have a memo for you next meeting. Um, we reached out, we've reached out to a couple of the organizations and we haven't heard back. And when I say we, um, Jenny has reached out to them as well as I and we haven't got any response back, which I'm assuming they're super busy. But thankfully, um, we were talking about it at the last staff meeting and Rachel and Jennifer were able to pass along a name to me that is local and she actually just sent me, um, an outline about five minutes before this meeting, so I haven't read it or anything yet, so. It's local and it might work very well for us.
Okay, good. Um, cause I want, I want in, whatever training.
It would be everybody.
Okay, good. And I think it looks like a lot of these are gonna be taken on by the personnel committee, like the handbook and, and, uh, you know, the, the value, performance evaluations and all that seems like?
Yeah, I think that'd be a good spot to dive into some of those things.
Okay. It's good.
Anything else, Mike?
Yeah, do we have mechanisms for employee feedback up the chain in terms of suggestions and anonymous suggestions and other things that we could get feedback in terms of what would make people happier in their job?
Yeah, I don't know if there's any, anything formal I'm aware of.
I don't know if there's like a, yeah, a certain policy, no?
I mean, other than just informally, just things being passed up and relayed up the chain. Um, yeah, nothing, no formal, no, uh, suggestion box or anything like that.
For the police department, we do. So we have as part of our evaluation policy, they're allowed to give feed, feedback and it would go all the way up to me.
Good.
That's the same, yeah, at senior center evaluations, there's a place for that, which ultimately goes to the administrator.
Gotcha.
Yeah, cause there's some things that employees just don't want to talk about with their boss necessarily face to face.
Yeah, and I think that's a, you know, I know a lot of communities have like chain of command policies that kind of outline if you're not comfortable going to your direct supervisor, then you can? kind of outline if you're not comfortable going to your direct supervisor, then you can go to this person and, you know, some of that. Kind of formalizes those relationships a little bit better so people understand them.
Because Martin is so intimidating.
Yes.
You found that too, huh?
Sorry, just couldn't resist.
So yeah, I mean, I think that's a good, certainly it sounds like it's been formalized in, in some places, but maybe something that we can clarify a little bit better in the handbook update. Anything else at all? And then last, southeast expansion area. So this project, as I understand it, has been in the village's planning documents for many, many decades. And I know that the board budgeted quite a bit of money actually for this year for some early stage planning and engineering on this area. And just prior to my arrival, Mike Grace and the staff and consultants were working on a development binder, they were calling it, where basically they were aggregating all the information about this growth area into a binder so that they could present it to the village board. And we could talk about, how do we move this thing forward? What, what do we do here? And so that's kind of where we're, we're at with that. So, you know, my action item here is, is workshop with village board and staff to review the concept, determine what are the board objectives are and then decide next steps. So I think, you know, finishing off that development binder, you know, which includes, you know, back, background information, information about the properties, information about potential concepts of, you know, where roads could be, where storm water management could be, all that early planning stuff. You know, information on how we could fund some of this, some of these things. I think that just needs to be a, a conversation in and of itself with the village board with all of that information. And certainly, this area has the potential to advance a lot of other goals that we have. Whether it's affordable housing or, you know, some of the community walkability incorporating that, intergovernmental cooperation with the town. You know, financial responsibility when we're talking about increasing tax base. So all of those things kind of feed into this. And certainly, as far as a business perspective, we're kind of built out. The north Main Street area is built out, our business park is built out, downtown is built out, other than, you know, redevelopment opportunities. But if somebody came to us and needed a certain amount of green acreage for a development, we don't have anything to offer them at this point. And so that would be what this would, would potentially address. And I threw a note in there at the end there. And certainly this is a conversation for, for the budget and for other times, but with the, the funding we're getting from the American Rescue Plan, the, the 1.1 million dollars. You know, there's kind of two umbrellas that that money can be used for. One is COVID related stuff, you know, revenue replacement programs, et cetera, equipment. Then there's this other umbrella of sewer and water infrastructure. And so this is potentially an opportunity where, you know, one of the big barriers for this business park, this expansion area has been getting over Highway fourteen with the utilities. And so this may be an opportunity to use some of those funds to kind of minimize that financial impact of, of getting those utilities across fourteen. And obviously that would be a very good, you know, long-term investment for the community as far as encouraging growth. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, do we have any idea how much it would actually cost to extend utilities across fourteen?
Yeah, I mean, we have, it's been a while since I've looked at those estimates. It depends on, I mean, just to extend water or just to extend sewer is a certain amount. I mean, to run, to run the pipes under fourteen is a certain amount, but it's the improvements you make on the other end. Whether it is a pump station, like a sewer pump station, that could be a million bucks plus. Or if you end up extending the water, how far you extend the, the water, you know, service into that area. And what kind of routes we have. So, but, I mean, we have what, a million four? Is that right?
One point one.
One point one million. It would go a long ways on those, those utilities. You know, we've also felt that maybe sometimes that money, we could go to start repairing, or swapping out some of our very old water mains in some of our older parts of the village, including like Dewey Street and some of the other areas, Jefferson Street, Lincoln or all those others down there that are very, very old.
So Martin, just a comment, I mean, and Jeff, for you too. I mean, one of the things, am I wrong? If someone were interested in a development over fourteen, this may be a way to sort of recoup some of those sort of expenses? Is that, is that so typically?
That's the problem. A lot of this is, I mean, this is a very complicated, moving across fourteen into that area is extremely complicated. With a lot of moving parts. And typically, typically development is driven, especially in those type of situations, by some large entity wanting to move it forward. If you look at that corner out at Stoughton that developed. You know, there, there was a big box retail plus a whole bunch of, you know, plus a entity looking to put a lot of things, all the, you know, QuickTrip, all those other, the Dunkin' Donuts, everything.
Now you have single family homes going up back there.
Homes and hotels and, and, you know, that's, that's someone coming to you with a plan. And, and, and says, okay, we want to acquire this land and do this. And that's when we would work with them and say, okay, it's going to cost 1.1 million dollars to run the utilities to you and we're going to expect to be reimbursed for half of that.
Yeah.
Or your TIF assistance is going to be that amount.
Yeah.
But just.
Yeah, and Martin, I'm not, am I speaking out of turn? That, that there, there has been some, some interest. We've had some interest in that over there. So it, it may not be too far along, I mean, too far away.
Yeah, and I think at this point it's kind of a chicken and egg sort of thing. Is the village committed to doing something or, you know, it's kind of, people are kind of wondering what the village's priorities are at this point. Jerry?
Jeff, aren't we going to use the rescue plan money to replace all the remaining lead pipes in town?
It was part, not specifically, it'd be part of probably pushing a, like we're saying, pushing a utility project such as Dewey Street or Lincoln Street, any of those, those presidential streets as we go forward. Or, and, and those have the four inch water main and the lead services on them.
Aren't, aren't there some on the south end of town?
There are two, yes.
Yeah, I mean, but I mean, to me, that's an obvious use for as much money.
Right, it could be State Street, it could be Washington's, or, yeah, it could be State Street, it could be. So Washington, yeah, Washington Street.
Elm got done, didn't it?
Elm got done. Well, no, Elm Street is still.
State and Washington are the two.
Correct.
To rephrase my question though, we will be, or I guess I'll make a statement. We will be using that money to replace the remaining lead pipe.
We don't know that yet.
We haven't decided.
That's really up to the village board.
It's a potential.
It's, I mean, unfortunately, 1.1 million dollars will go a long ways, but it's not going to go, it's not going to fix everything. I mean, you know, the projects we talk about are very, very expensive. And so, you know, and, and just replacing, the, the problem with say like our lead laterals is we've got four inch water main in these streets. Okay? And so four inch water main, considering today's standard is, is eight inch water main in the streets. So if you, if you understand the difference of that, that's like saying, you know, one versus a hundred. Okay, it's that type of scale of volume that you can get water through there. So it's, it's very significant. And you wouldn't just go in and just replace lead water services and connect to a four inch water main. We'd have a whole slew of problems.
So aren't those a health hazard though?
The, the, the lead services? No. No. They are, I mean, and that's what's, you know, we, we keep having more, this is way getting way off topic here, but I mean, we.
Not really.
Well, the, the lead services have been used for years and years and years. We test them. We test regularly lead services in the village. I mean, I think twenty to thirty annually that we test. And they're actually changing how they're tested as well. So that you would, a homeowner or a person getting, who has, doing the test would, I think Dawn was just explaining this to, this to me the other day, so I apologize if I get it kind of wrong, but would take a sample at the first minute and the second minute and the third minute and the fourth minute to determine if there's a decrease, you know, in, in lead levels. What you have to understand is the lead services have, they develop kind of a slime or a crust on the inside that is actually a protective coating. What they found is when those, those become dangerous is when someone monkeys around with it, changes a valve out or something like that. And it freshens up a little bit and your levels go higher, but.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's, there's a lot more worry about it, I think, than necessary at times. Yeah, we want to replace them.
But typically, it's the homeowner's responsibility for the lateral.
For the lateral from the sidewalk to the house is, is their responsibility.
Right. So we don't, we don't have any more lead in our pipes?
Yes, we do.
Ours?
Yep.
Oh, that's not good.
Well, no, we have it, we have it from our main to the, to the, the sidewalk.
Oh, I got you. That, yeah, a nose, but, okay. But we're working on replacing them. So I, I still think it should be a priority. I think they're trying to get rid of them at the state level.
We have a policy that's been, that's been proved by the board that whenever we do a water main replacement project and we're replacing laterals or, or water main and, and you always freshen the laterals up then, if we encounter any lead laterals, those residents are required to have those, have those changed out.
We know that, Amanda. We, we had to have ours done.
Yep, South Main Street.
Yeah, I didn't realize we had an ours, but that's interesting.
So, yeah, with this one, I think the way forward is, is Jeff kind of said, there's, there's a lot of complicating issues surrounding this development. And probably the first best step is to kind of dig in with all the information and decide, how can we push this forward? And I think they were on the right track with, with putting together this, this binder. And I think we're, we're pretty close to putting it all together and being ready for that conversation.
So, related to this southeast business park, I remember seeing that, and, and Martin, you and I have talked about this a little bit, about half of it is a designated FEMA floodplain. And I guess I'm wondering how much of this is, area is actually developable? And, you know, even if we filled in some areas, I mean, is that a good idea considering the, our flooding history in Oregon, we're very low, like, you know, realistically, what can we do with that area and what should we do with that area?
Yep. And I think that's part of this binder is.
Absolutely.
The engineers have kind of delineated that a little bit and, and shown what is really developable and I think proposes how best to manage the stormwater in that area. So that's certainly something that can be looked at and talked about.
It can be worked with though? Like, I mean, you know, could we put a business park there? That's doable?
Yeah, from what I've seen, yeah. Yep.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there is a lot of land, but you're correct. There's a lot of, there's, there's wetland. And so we can build rolling meadows over there and, and, but then there's also floodplain and stuff. So that's all being considered.
Okay. All right.
So is that?
It's it.
It's all good? Mike?
Yeah. So part of strategic planning is prioritizing. And I feel like what we've done is we've taken the approach of yes and on all of this. How much of this is actually feasible, given the resources of the village and constraints on staff? I know some of these projects we have under, underway already and, and we're going to be spending time on it regardless of, of what happens. Some of this is involving maybe getting new citizens involved to, to staff some of these committees, but given everything else that's going on, is the timeframes that you have listed in each of these, is, is those on a one by one basis? Or is that actually feasible when you combine them all?
I think it's feasible when you combine them all. I think generally, most are feasible within the first two years. You know, some of them are, I kind of noted that they're a little bit farther out, obviously. I think the specific items that are actionable are feasible within those two years. What comes of some of those, like the committees developing a plan, some of that stuff? Whatever comes out of that, that's prob, that's going to take longer, obviously. That's, that'll be for the next two-year cycle. But I think it's feasible to set up some of these committees, get underway with, with discussion and, and building some of these goals and objectives. And then I think, you know, like I said, a lot of these actionable items are, are underway or can be underway shortly. And I think it's feasible to get them done within the next one or two years.
Okay, Martin, done?
I'm good. You guys are good.
Let's go, let's finish this one up. Let's go to eleven is new business. We have none. Twelve is future agenda items. Any, anything from board members? Opportunity to place items in new business on a future agenda for discussion. Your chance.
I'm over German.
All right.
My, you're quick.
Can we just bounce back to one thing real quick? I apologize. I know we already passed it, but.
Did we skip one?
No, no, no. I just wanted to come back. A few things came up as we were going through the meeting regarding the mask requirement. You know, the police department building is very unique in that, you know, we, we talked about people wearing masks, but the visitors we bring into the police department, it's a rather unique situation. I can tell you with public health, what they did with us for police, obviously masks, we're going to push our employees to wear masks because right now that's what should be done. So I don't want to imply that that's what we're trying to do is get out of wearing masks. But we also bring back drunk drivers to be processed. We have to watch their mouth, make sure they're not vomiting, regurgitating, things like that. So we are going to have unique circumstances where that just is not feasible. And also if we have a combative person, we're not going to put our hands near their mouth, try to get a mask on. So I just want to put that out there because we, we do have visitors, some cooperative, some not. But many are very intoxicated. So just.
Yeah, and Chief, I think we understand that. I mean, just.
I just want, and my officers though, when they know there's a room place, they'll follow it. So, and then also that comes to the enforcing side of that. So this rule is in place. I don't know if the village board has thought about how that'll be enforced. Obviously, I don't foresee any employees not following the rules, but, you know, like for example, village hall, obviously this is a, this is a controversial issue. Some people, they feel they've been vaccinated, they don't want to wear masks. So what if you get a customer that comes into village hall and they just simply do not want to wear a mask? How do you envision that playing out? Would that be us being involved? Or would that be staff asking them to leave? Because that certainly presents a challenge. And we have been challenged on this before.
Yeah, I mean, I think what was unique before was village hall was closed. So.
Exactly.
Now it's open.
I will tell you from the police side, we will still take complaints because we don't want to turn anyone away that needs police assistance. They may just come in not having a mask and we don't have a lot to offer for masks. We really need them for our personnel if, if that's what's going to happen, so.
What do you guys think? What do we, what do we do?
I was, I was thinking about this too. And I, you know, I, I hate to have.
Yeah, how do we, what do we instruct our staff to do?
Yeah, I mean, obviously you guys have to eat. You have to be understood on the phone if you have to take your mask down to talk on the phone to be understood more clearly. I mean.
It's not so much the staff, it's the people coming in.
Right.
We need, we need some guidance on what, what do we do with people who come in and refuse to put a mask on?
Well, when there was an emergency order, did we have like suddenly rights to have people removed, whereas now we don't or like?
It was never open though.
It was a fine line.
Open. Well, even with. Well, even with other businesses, we'd get complaints, we just educated. I, you know, half the time, nobody knew what the current order was. Most would, you know, comply. And if every, the plan was if anybody absolutely ever outright refused and was verbally combative, then we could look at disorderly conduct, but we certainly worked towards just compliance. In this situation, we have a lot of people now that have been vaccinated and they may not agree with having to wear a mask as they walk in to pay a bill. And how, you know, I certainly don't want to see our Village Staff get put in a difficult situation.
Candy wants to.
Yeah, sure.
So, we had that, we kind of experienced that a little bit during bowling. Because there were some people that came in that didn't have their masks when bowling. And honestly, what we did is we just let them carry on. We didn't raise a concern, we just let them carry on and got them out as fast as we could. I mean, we didn't, you know, we asked them to wear a mask and if they didn't, we just kept right on going.
Yeah, we, when I was with the Village Point, we were open and we had mask requirements, but some people didn't want to wear them and that's exactly how we handled it. It's just process and.
I suggest we, you know, get up a lot of signs and if they don't do it, the last thing we want is any of our staff getting in a scuffle with somebody from the public.
Even our policing.
Yeah, anybody.
We don't need the use of force issues with, over a mask.
And I think, I think, I think the catch-all in the motion that made me feel good about it was when safely to do so. And I think if that can be interpreted broadly by the staff for those situations, or maybe it's not comfortable asking someone to wear a mask, it's not safe, then I think we're good to make that call.
Yeah, if I could add, if we could have it to where if a staff member can be in an area where they have no contact with anyone else, like, maybe they have our office and they can close the door, like Lisa, you know, they could have their mask off then. You know, we started out with this real broad statement, maybe we should just give some allowance for like Lisa to sit there with her mask off for half the day doing her work versus.
Oh, that's kind of what we did. And like, if we were sitting at our desks and stuff and nobody was around us, we're spaced out. I don't want to remove your mask. I mean, I think it's all about common sense.
Yes.
Yes.
I don't think the board members are going to probably come in and make sure we're all.
No.
I tell you though, with my officers, they will follow it to a T, that's why I'm like, whoa.
Does it help you, Chief?
Yes, that does, it's just, you know, I.
Yeah, just common sense.
Yeah, and there's just challenges. And that's with the library and the Senior Center too, it's, they all present their own unique challenges.
I don't want to see anybody trying to eat their sandwich with their mask on, no.
Me neither.
No, and if, I think if we have issues, we can bring them back to you for further discussion.
Candy's advice, just let them go because it's not, it's not worth it.
Can we just make another motion or something that any issues that arise or if this needs to be modified, that we give Martin the power to do that?
Sure.
Are you guys comfortable with that?
First one or not?
Well, we've already voted on it.
All right, Amanda, do you want to make one?
Can I do that at this point? Is that okay?
Yeah, you could do it, you need to.
I would like to make a motion that if the previous motion that we passed tonight on mask-wearing needs amendment.
This is another motion.
Yes, if it needs amending or changing to.
Interpretation, interpretation?
Yes, I'm going to grant Martin Shank's wide power of interpretation for the motion we passed earlier.
All right, somebody give him a second. All right, Luke, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, okay, there you go, Martin, you've got all the power.
There you go.
All right, any other, we're still, any other future agenda items? Anybody want to make sure we get them on? Otherwise, Jerry, go ahead.
Motion adjourned.
All right, second, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.